Okay, so folks, thanks for coming to us. I'm speaking here.
So make sure you come on Monday, they'll be here physically. Okay? Some will be online, lecture. December 1 to 6, another person will come physically. So, but between now and that time, you need to get all your documents together. We are going to give you links. Every Tuesday at 3 o'clock for the past five years, Necotech has what they call an info session. Also Fridays at 3:00 PM, the virtual info session. Make sure you join into that. When you go to that info session, it gives you all the information you need. And normally at the info sessions, we invite the universities to come themselves. What we try to do is like to directly search the people, so you don't have to do. Now, on the 19th, our loan company is going to give a webinar. In the webinar, you can learn everything about the loan, interest rate, information, how much you can get, and so on. We don't like to bother ourselves doing that. We want them to deal with you directly. Alright? So make sure you know this program, so that you know the facts yourself, you ask them the questions yourself. And when you come ask questions, many African you come to class, you fight, then ask questions, you go Friday time. Eh... no, 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 no. You have to be bold. There's a... yes! You need to be bold. I want some lions to come out of this place. Running from this point. Because it's a very competitive world. You should sit around about it. Do you understand? You are the lions of Africa. So when you come to the class, ask the question, because you have a place to go. Don't come and be quiet in our class, we're not allowed. Are we clear? Alright.
I'm Ben, former junior. I'm Ben, former junior. Then, former junior.
Okay. Ben Junior.
A graduate of the University of Blackpool. Red, electric, electrical engineering. I do work for the Bureau of Environmental Protection as one of its lead engineers.
How many years have you worked?
I've worked five years. But then, I want to ask a question regarding this bank statement. With the money in the bank, are you people requesting for us to give you this money or?
No, we don't, we don't want a credit.
If you... Can we get a bank statement from the US? If we have anybody still staying there?
I, um, I want cameras off.
Cameras off.
I want all your cameras off, because I want to talk to you as a family. Put all your cameras away. I want all cameras. I want all cameras.
Amen, cheers. I know what I'm doing, yeah?
Hello, hello.
Let me answer the question. Listen. When I come, the issue is, think there are information concerning that aspect. That's why we said, each of you will come for interview, our ministry, our committee, and provide you all the basic information. But the basic thing you need to know now is how you're going to go about doing the things you gotta do. Now, someone asked a very personal question here, that you are taking so much America, then it's impossible. If you were saying, the room where you said to ask somebody in America, your family will not be in America. You shouldn't have welfare there. They want to help you so that you can have a link so that when you go, you can speak to your family. So they are both have information that they provide for you.
Guys, listen.
So you gotta understand, are you understanding my point?
If you know what I...
Hello, hi. Hello. Shall we prepare a list then? Please.
We are being conditioned to be against this, but that's what's wrong with us. And that's what has kept us down here for so long. Alright? You are seeing United States. You are seeing African union. You are seeing people united. But Africa is always divided. Even brother to brother, they don't want to. They want to see how they can bring each other down. That threw him down a stop sign. I'm doing this in your interest. If I'm giving you the good advice, what am I doing to you? What am I doing? Don't have this in my time. Tell me. So I'm giving you information. Because of the guy that I said upstairs, he sent me here, so I can't come and say, "Oh, I'm going." No. We are on a mission. On purpose and on Monday. We are looking for serious-minded people who really want to make a difference in their lives and in their families. Nothing less, nothing more. If that's not you, you don't be here. If you are about dividing this country or fighting any other African, we are not interested. I come from the Prime Minister. We move together as Africa as one. I have enough people in Ghana, I don't have to come to Africa. I can help just Ghana alone. So if you come here as the second hope for me, and you are interested, I will help. If you are not, I don't. I lose nothing. Are you clear? I just want us to be very, very clear. Malawi is even better. When you get to Malawi, they're all going to carry us. President King gave an award, they are beautiful. Many, many Malawians have been brought up this story for many years. Yes.
Hello. This is the president of Necotech. He raised that, he raised that question, so that we will be the patients. I came from the University of Liberia. Speak up, please. My son, my little son. Recent grant rate. Uh, I was part of the first one. On Tuesday, I was on the program.
Oh, wonderful.
You know, certainly, Pice University, so... So, uh, yesterday, when the Zoom meeting...
Listen to this man.
During the Zoom meeting, the guy that was the gentleman, he said that at Pice University, they don't offer fullness funded scholarship.
Are you serious?
They don't offer fullness funded scholarship, but they offer scholarship, partial scholarship.
Yes.
So my question now is that, like the system we just said, is that the government's responsibility to provide room for these 250 students? But then, in the check the E-Marchal, they talk about 250 million. That non-colateral room.
The non-colateral room is allocated money for Liberia. Some countries will give them up to 100 million for 1,000 students. Some people, 100 students, 10 million. The loan company has limited sources. So we have gone and spoken to them. We want 250 Liberians to get this. And they give up to 100,000 ahead. So that's what turns to 25 million. So when that money is finished, we don't have no collateral loan for Liberia again. Are we clear? But Ghana has 100 million for 1,000 Ghanaians they can go. Namibia has like 10 million. The other countries have different amounts. Alright? So that's what you have now. If you waste a lot of time fighting each other, going around in circles, when the time is past, they're not coming back. So you either get on board and use the time, the window that has opened, when it shuts, we are done. There are 54 countries on the continent. They are all looking on our road. You go there. Are we clear? So I need you guys to be wild and get it.
Like from Tuesday, with the Zoom meeting, I covered a thousand things. So he was one of those, I was speaking to us. So he said, actually, this scholarship, really studying America is not actually for people.
It's not.
I don't assume that. So assuming that, for me now, so like he said, at the Pice University, they don't offer fully funded scholarship. Assuming that I want to study pharmaceutical epidemiology at the Pice University, right? And he said that maybe in my course, there is six credits. And probably studying at the University of Pice, Pice University in America, our credit is almost of 1,500 to 1,800 United States now. That would cost almost 4,000 for the two years. The accommodation might be 18,000. So it will go up to almost 8,000. And I believe that Necotech is playing a critical, very role between Liberia and other United States. So, for me now, I might not generate that, we're talking about their statement. So who is responsible to pay that money to the university? Is it Necotech? Liberia or?
Necotech is not a loan company. We are facilitating through bringing practice together to help the youth of Africa. We have no responsibility to pay 80,000 for you. We have gone to speak to loan companies to allocate a certain amount of money to 25 million for 250 Liberians, which is 100 up to 100,000 per person. It doesn't mean that you, maybe you decide to go to one of the schools, maybe 20,000 is a course. All the courses are different. Like a school like Harvard, which is not on our list. If you don't have 100,000, you can't even think about it. For the schools, they are very expensive, housing is expensive. So we have chosen schools that are like midway for you. So what you need to do is look at the partial scholarships available, do the application, and then you speak to Valan Roseberry, and then they put a free approval of loan for you. They still their credentials, like this person here got 65,000, right? Not all of them. But you have to go to free approval. They'll tell you, you can only get to 40,000. Maybe you need it. And it doesn't mean that what you want is what you get. They are going to assess to you. Not your government, to you. The government just went to say, "Oh, help my people. Please come to our country." They saw the good work we're doing in Malawi, and they invested it here through your Ministry of Foreign Affairs, for us to do it. I hope you understand.
Sure.
Okay? And your government of Raisin Togba, because of the track record we have of doing this in other countries very successfully. And that's how it works. If you didn't come, say, "Oh, Liberia wants to give money." No, that's not what happened. Are you clear?
Yeah.
And that's the story. So if you're running your party, you have a responsibility. Everybody here is responsible. Necotech is not responsible. You are responsible to go and find a bank statement of 20,000. If you can't, you don't go. Are we clear?
Yeah.
Is that 10 or 40 or anything between?
So we are not... You say you won't pay for anything. Now, I want you to try and run and do for money.
What's the government's ruling today? They are saying, they are saying that there's an opportunity for less...
Government is giving you answers. It was not for your government to love you. We change our organization of your government, but not for them to love you. We are being supposed to help by your government. Especially being supposed to help by your government. So your government has played a very big role. Now you need to do the rest. We don't believe in handouts. It's hand up. Hand up, not hand down. All of Africa, they want hand down. It's time for you to think hand up. I just tell you, stand. I'm not saying sit down and... That's what this is about. It's not a handout. Stand up, and that's your government, they say this. Stand. I want you to stand. You have to do the standing. You have to get up. You have to do it. You need to take this on yourself. Not on yours. My auntie, my uncle, my brother, my sister, help me through the bank statement to make it happen. When you come to our country... It's making a very important conversation.
Ask a question straight.
It's a very important conversation.
Ask a question, and ask a question, ask a question. And so the question you asked here was specifically about uh, the money, you don't have the money, what can you do?
That has to be answered.
Thank you. And then, so when you answer that question, then you have to answer that question. Then they come back to you. But if my dad, mom, be doing, you know, you can reply whatever you want to answer.
He made a very important statement, I do want to acknowledge it before. Uh, we wanted to do is the phase for 250, but the time, we spent too much time fighting. We've lost time. So those 250, they cannot go in general. 50 is what we can do. Do you understand? And if you can make the process go smoothly, then the 50 can really go. But if we spend time going around resorts and needles and la, 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 and that, right? And doing this whole media drama dance, then maybe the 50 cannot go generally. Because we're busy trying to... Do you understand? But if you rise up and says, "Shut it down, please be still." We are in America, 50 of us. Those 50, the government is going to watch how they behave. The ministry and the embassy will watch how they behave. If they behave well, then we need the additional 200. You go and they go and start doing silly things. The 200 is cut to another country. That's exactly, are we clear?
Yeah, sure.
But let, let...
Thank you so much.
I want to show you what's up. This one. We are always going this side, this side. Let's go to the...
Uh, my name is Lekta Teller. But I read on this one. I mean, I'm...
We can't hear you.
So this bank statement is something very difficult and so much...
Then you can go.
Yes, I'm saying.
Okay.
Just recently, I applied to the...
Say again.
I was accepted. They asked me to provide a bank statement relating to 36,000 dollars. Uh, looking at me, self-sponsored student from high school to university, where should I get these 36,000 dollars? Even if you put all the money from my relatives or friends and people, all their money, their bank accounts, will not even reach up to 20,000 dollars. But yet, the school is asking me for 36,000 dollars.
Because...
So now my question is, if I am not able to provide this bank statement relating to 36,000 dollars, can Necotech help me in the process?
What school? What school did you apply? Have you applied for this school?
Hook College, yeah, Hook College.
Okay, it's not one of our schools. It's not one of our schools.
I'm just like asking for a question. If it is a school that Necotech is part of,
Yeah.
can Necotech help me in the process?
Yes.
To provide this bank statement?
We can't help you with bank statement. We can only help you... I, I need you to understand this very clearly. We don't help people... Please let me quiet. We don't help with bank statements. We can only help with loan letter, like this. You apply to our loan company, they'll tell you, okay, we can give you 40,000. You add that to your documents, and that's what you take. Do you understand? But we are not going to give you somebody's bank statement to take to embassy. You don't do that.
My name is Michel Somi. You keep saying list of school, list of school. So I want to know the list of school. Are they specific? And if they are?
You come to the info session. Every Tuesday and Friday, those schools will be there. Monday, one of them will be here. Start talking to them. Go to our website, www.necotechcenter.org. Every information you want is there. www.necotechcenter.org. All of you, go there, do the research, get it for you.
Okay, yeah.
But I come to the info sessions Tuesdays at 3:00, Fridays at 3:00, we'd be happy to help you.
Yes, so incidentally, if someone has a mission letter already at one of the school on the list, what next?
If you, do you have I-20?
Yeah, already.
You have I-20, so go to the embassy, you don't need that.
Oh, okay, that's cool.
Yeah. Please, let's, let's... What is your name?
Mark Isissi.
What?
Graduate of the African University School of Engineering.
What's your name?
Marcus. Ma... Marcus Isissi.
Mark. Okay.
In the event where my relative...
Hey, Mark is speaking, man.
In the event where my relative, who's going to be providing the statement for these piles of different, these further than mine? Is that going to be your problem?
No. Your church can help. Your organizations. There are so many different... They don't actually have your thing last. Yes.
I'm Prince Di Maes.
The prince is in the house. Can we?
I'm Prince Di Maes. From St. Louis University.
What university?
St. Louis University.
Okay.
So I want to inquire. If...
After prince, I'm taking one last question, I'm done. Go ahead.
I want to inquire if the SAT test or the...
SAT.
The SAT test or the SAT test is required.
No. We are doing master's exam. Master's. SAT is for martial arts. Yeah. We are doing master's.
Yeah, please us. Please.
No, no, that's a lady, the women have not spoken. Last question for you.
Hello, please provide...
Stand, so it's okay, you know.
The lady, right?
The lady.
That will come closer. Alright. Go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Beautiful Liberian lady, look at this lady. What's your name?
I'm Lucy Jacober, a graduate from the Advantage University of West Africa. And pardon me, everyone, to say this, it's shocking, but I've sat here for over some minutes and I actually got to know about this, Necotech, uh, listening to SPOON TV. And I got interested in this program, so... But I already don't understand when it comes to, you know, the application process pertaining to Necotech. Yeah, I already want to know because when it comes to those requirements that are needed, you know... When it comes to...
That's my miss.
Those requirements, because it's what I really want to understand. I have listened to everyone's point of views concerning this, you know, bank statement, all of stuff like that.
So come and see this day, we give you the website. Help, go to her. And then Monday, on Monday, try and see the employer that's coming, okay? I will see you.
If you're watching that coming, come and ask this.
Yeah. Go to those.
Alright, listen, listen, listen. Um... Okay, so ask one more question, or compare the question, then show us a response to the question. Okay, you put, what do you say?
Vete. Yeah, thank you so much. My name is Mohamed Yahya Vete. I've been one of the applicants who have attended nearly all of the classes, including the prep and as well the readiness. And I am one of the students who also paid the 200. Mohamed Yahya Vete.
Okay.
Mohamed. Oh, my name is Yahya.
Yahya.
Oh, alright.
Let me ask a question, so ask a question, then we...
Mohamed. Mohamed Yahya.
Yeah, we finished. Why?
So, yeah. So, uh, yesterday, with Pice, uh, school, they told us, I mean, the professor of Pice...
Pice.
The professor.
Pice.
Pice, yeah. They told us during our presentation yesterday on Zoom, because we were looking at the time interval. And he told us, I mean, he advised us that we should apply for May. Yeah, for install of, yeah, install of this general because of the time interval. Yes.
The time is too short.
Time too short.
Yeah, for some school. Every school has when they close for the January. Some are closed already. Some are closed this month yet. Some are closed December.
So depending on your school.
October 1. So you have to ask the school, what is your date? For Pice, it's late for them for January. So for Pice, you can go in May, September or next.
Yeah.
You want to go in January, you can.
Right. Then my last question has to do with the website that was shared by Foreign Affairs and as well Ministry of Education. The people are applying almost, they're making it like a form, where the, the, I mean...
They're putting fake name in there.
Putting fake names. And the website is still coming out. And as well, they're putting below 3. GPA and they are still accepting them. So I'm kind of surprised to what are the websites.
So that's the first phase. The system now goes by algorithm to make...
No, no.
So don't worry about it.
So we use that form in all the countries that we work with. There was a campaign on social media telling people to fill it out, like in mass spaces, put fake pictures, put fake names, put fake addresses. If you answer the question the way that we would qualify, then the system, which is technology, is going to approve you, is going to give you a preliminary acceptance letter. What we are in the process of doing right now is weeding out the fake noise. So people like you, and there were seven other people like you who jumped on and who've been participating, we understand. Like, this, this is, this is the type of people we want.
Right, we honor you.
We honor you and thank you for that. What we are doing is we are canceling out. So we are going to a system, but it's just like, if you fill anything out, like a credit card application, you say, "I made 50 million dollars," la, da, da, da. They're gonna say, "Yay, you approved," until they start pulling all your credit and doing all the things. So we are in the process of weeding out, "Yay, that never happened." This is the only country that that's happened with us.
Yeah.
The only one. And then, if you pay, we are going to give you your money back. Because that's hard.
Gentlemen, gentlemen. Gentlemen. If you ask three questions, then we'll answer it one time.
I'm Jeffrey M.K. Sanon, a graduate from the United Methodist University. Uh, my concern has to do with the cancellation of the 236. Because we are told I attended the preschool section and also in the readiness stream as well.
You paid?
I did pay.
Okay.
And I started, yesterday, I was still in Zoom meeting with Pice University. I started my application already. But we were told by you in the pre-section that if you didn't pay the 236, there's a preference treatment for you.
Astrid.
Yes. Now that the 236 has been canceled, because I'm almost saying that you're going to help us in the present when it comes to the application. Now that you have canceled such, so no more ticket, no more deposit for the housing, and no more funding for the class. This is what I want to know as well.
No, but you've just come in to do your normal thing. The ones who have paid directly to that, for them.
Okay.
But the ones who have not, you can't do that. You don't pay, do normal thing, your normal way, you are fine.
Alright.
Alright?
Yes.
Yeah. And those who have paid, they don't want to give the money back.
You'll get the money back to them. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm Abraham B. Bolle, a graduate from the University of Liberia. Uh, I noticed too that the beneficiary will be only 250 students. So why is more than 250 students apply for this program? So what would be the mental of selection? Besides, how long the program going to go for?
We will give you all the information before we close. Thank you. The next question.
So my question directly now, speaking from the Neotel by the government, since the government did a very good job on Connor Dagado from Brooklyn, and he had worked with me in the Agdi Department. I've had so many experiences. Uh, I know we keep measuring the bank statement, bank statement, and see most students requiring a bank statement information because it's one of the most complicated thing getting in Liberia. The government on... Yes. Yes. The government, yeah?
Is it all over Africa?
Yes. So the government on ground, they know the actuality. For me personally, I have one of four different scholarships, partial scholarship to the US, but I couldn't provide up to 30,000 bank statement. I planned up to 75,000 in grade. And then, I couldn't get it. I went to formal official, all over. So for me, my recommendation, yeah, my recommendation to the government, since the government already decided to do this for us. I'm... To bring, to bring you a...
No, 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 no. I don't want you to leave here with misconception.
I know.
No, no, no. You guys, listen. You, you are the ambassadors. Listen, I like straightforward things.
Yeah.
You are the ambassadors that are going to leave here to go and give the truth. Don't go and multiply the misconception. Government didn't say they are coming to give you money to go to school. Go.
That's my question. That's not my recommendation.
Well, government is facilitating.
They mean if you apply one...
Do a loan letter.
Yes.
To do a loan letter, you add 30,000, and you go. You do a loan letter, you add thirty thousand, then you go.
Exactly, but you say for the loan letter, you should show tax to your country.
Yeah.
That's, that's where the problem can come from.
Government cannot be your tax.
I, I think the government is supposed to be able to answer that for us.
Government provides an enabling environment all over the continent. Government, even the US embassy, if you go and bring government, don't fail you. I don't want you to confuse the visa, so I have to show you the proper way. I, I can tell you what you want to hear, but I don't want to do that. I want to give you the hard truth.
Yeah, the proper way was honestly.
Yeah.
For example.
You have to get the hard truth.
When you go to get a US visa.
I'm not a politician.
Government cannot go say.
I agree.
I was saying when the mayor go come back.
No.
Government can do that. First of all, you have to be move, move to yourself and say, this is what I want to do for my country. What we can do is to provide the environment and ensure that the information you getting is accurate, and there's a clear support for you to go, and there's a need for you to go and get, and come back and help your country. We protecting the environment for you, that's all we can do for you. But to say, we'll go support you, we'll go there to defend you, we'll be a collateral for you, we can promise you that.
No, not that you can promise, we can't do that.
No, no, we can't do it, ah, we can't do that.
That's all, listen, but that's where we come in. So you have to apply for the loan, you get a loan letter, and add the sum you are paying.
So all the collateral I can apply for the loan letter.
We add the loan letter, so that's what.
So if you get a loan letter, all the collateral is announced, man. We can see it, see it.
Yes, it's a non-collateral, okay?
Yeah, so, so all the process of the loan, loan application.
Come to class, join the program, come to class, there's a whole loan. The loan company is going to do a webinar on the nineteenth of November. Bring all the questions directly to them, they'll answer everything for you, okay? That's what we do, we bring the people to you, you ask them the questions yourself, they, everybody answers. It's a big program with so many us.
Thirty six.
Yes.
Now, would that your government, where will you find, where will you pass the meeting, essentially? Would that your government, where will the schools come to you?
Let's, let's give you the announcement.
You can have access to the school.
Let's close the announcement, we are about to close.
Yeah, okay.
We, we are about to close, like you heard from her. Um but next week, one of the school will be here.
Monday, right?
One of the school will be here on Monday.
Yeah.
You'll be hearing from us to be announcement, providing the area where you've been meeting to go to your interview.
Okay.
Now, we are expecting that those of you who are coming, or come from actual great resort, you'll be coming from three point five to four point. Three point five to four point. Listen to me, every school have their own requirement. Thank you. So every school have their own requirement. They are coming here, they live from America, they're coming here because they want to make sure that, what I said, from three point five to four point, they will be looking at those first batch of people immediately, and will be sending out, because time is limited. Because from now to next month, uh January already is too short. So they are, they are coming here to recruit other people. So if you're coming, you will meet with, you will call, uh where is, uh, where you from? So those who. Okay, we'll give you the information, when you come to the foreign ministry, they will provide information for you, or they will announce it to you later on when they will be coming, where you go to meet them, and this thing will be happening, happening for you. So please, follow the information pattern and share it with people.
Yeah, yeah, this is one thing, so, all people, again, again, attending.
It is not about us, it's about what the school is saying.
Yeah, and they will.
And the loan, the loan company is also saying the same thing, so come overall, they will give you more information on that, when they come Monday, they will provide more information for you. We don't know much about that, they get through all to tell you that, these are things. You are announcing, I said, you are announcing.
Three point five.
Yes. You gotta come, it's fair. They're coming to you. Alright, thank you so much, guys. We are grateful that you gave them the appropriate information.
So, welcome to Spoon TV.
So what?
Welcome to Spoon TV.
Yes.
What do you make from the, uh, uh, activity here today, the time, how engagement?
Yeah, the activities, the activities are that bad really, but the, the whole process is still like confusing because, and like they're all.
Still confused after the engagement years?
It's still challenging for most of we, the Liberians, because the major problem we have as a students, like, especially those students that are coming from a poverty background, is the bank statements. So they still saying that, like, this school that come, if you don't have three point five, they will not enroll you. And also, uh, for the, for the, for the, let me try to say, for the, uh, 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 for Necotech, they saying that you need to stay for bad bank statement. And so for these two schools in the US, sometimes they will ask you for thirty thousand bank statement, sometimes they will ask you for thirty six thousand bank statement. You from a poverty background, it's still very, very challenging for us.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello, what's your name?
I'm Abraham B Bolle.
Abraham, what's your take on the engagement here today?
Uh it seems to be so much difficult for us, uh, as a Liberian students.
Okay.
Because many of us, some of graduates from university, we don't have a fifteen term. Especially that with the, uh, bank statement issue, is a, is a challenging one for us. If the government would take the initiative to, to, to serve as a collateral for us, I think that would be okay. But when it comes to the bank statement, uh, it will be a challenging one for us.
Okay.
I will see that, I mean, I can see that more, more, most of them will better even go because of the bank statement. But even if I put my, I have a bank account, but I don't have anything in it. So even if I put my, I mean, I ask my uncle, my nephew, my aunt for their bank statement.
You put everything together.
I put everything together, it can't go anywhere. So I mean, two men got to take charge of this, uh, situation.
Thank you. Thank you for attending the Spoon TV. Uh my colleague Sabesha Cholopya has joined in, he's going to talk to Mohamed Yaya.
So yes, like continuing to, uh, talk to, yeah, uh, talk to more students, yeah, let, I thought you know. I thought you, so like talk to, uh, this fellow, uh, how are you? How you doing?
I'm good, I'm, I'm good, my friend, how are you?
Are you one of the students who applying for the scholarship?
Indeed, I am one of the Liberians who apply, and his application was approved. And I'm also one of the students who pay the two hundred and sixty dollars that I talk about.
Oh, you paid two hundred and sixty dollars already? Uh for, what, what, what was the two hundred and sixty dollar for?
So the two hundred and sixty dollar, according to, uh, Necotech, it is meant to augment, uh, your application process. You know, some of the challenges that you as a person, whenever you know how to do, you know, like, like, uh, visa fee and other things, they will be responsible to pay those things. So it, it was based on that ground, some of us, you know, pay that amount of money, mainly about, that's it.
So I, I heard the lady was talking about, you know, you need to refund the money, did you hear, did you hear that part?
Yes. So, I, I think because of the, the noise on the social media from, from Liberians, and, uh, due to also the government intervention, uh Necotech has decided to cancel, uh, short process, that is the two hundred and sixty dollars that we're supposed to pay, they have decided to cancel it. And they said, those of all who are paid, they're going to give our money back.
Okay.
Alright.
And you are one of those?
So I'm one of those, so let's see whether, I mean, it's going to happen.
The two hundred and sixty dollars. So, uh, many of your colleagues, they do complain about bank statement, bank statement. How is it in your case?
So, you see, let me tell you something, my, my friend. One of the reasons why some of us decided to participate is because we saw the Liberian government, particularly the president of the popular of Liberia, the, the man who I respect so much, and as well the foreign minister, the lady, uh, construct the pay for mother, and I have a very strong respect for her, and also the education minister. When I saw them gathering together to launch your program, obviously I had no doubt that the program were going to be this way, they're going to be fake, what's it, after current.
Which way, which way?
After current, I still do not have a doubt.
Okay.
At the program, you know, God, setting, uh, ugly motive, I don't have absolutely no doubt. So I was encouraged.
Wait, uh, let, 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 let us tell what you're saying.
Right.
What are you saying when you say you, 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 you had no doubt that this program could have ugly motive?
Because some people on radio and on social media have quote unquote, when their man said that the program is a scam.
Okay.
That there's no scholarship for any Liberian.
Okay.
Uh, the Liberian government is in no condition with any university, any university of America.
Okay.
For me, I disagree with that.
Okay.
Because I believe that the president said, you know, launch the program, and because of that, obviously, uh, it can never be something that is scam, because.
It cannot be scam.
It cannot be, because the, the, the president is involved, and you know, foreign ministers involved, education minister involved. So who said that if Necotech were dealing with some kind of organization in Liberia,
Okay.
I wouldn't have participated in the process, but I had to do with.
Liberian government.
Liberian government, that's what limit the participation.
Okay. Thank you so much, your name?
Mohamed Yahya Vete.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, uh, folks, that's it, um, we tried to get words from students who have expressed interest in the, uh, scholarship. And this is the tutorial by the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, that taught it then how to understand, uh, the scholarship particularly. So let's see, whether we can talk to one or two more students, and then, um. Hello, guys, can we, can we tell you guys, please? As far as you are, can, can we tell you guys about the scholarship, please? Yes, let's, yeah, yes, can we, yes, you, you are, you are one of those students who were asked a question, though. So you are one of those students who were asked a question about the scholarship. Uh, what was your concern, this is Spoon TV? Oh, okay. It seems that you. Okay, yes, go ahead. So I'm asking, what was your question that you, that you were asking?
Yes, uh, for me, I raise a concern concerning the application process of Necotech,